Our first order of business is the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Welcome, everyone. Our second order of business is, let's change my papers here, recognitions. We have some. We have two groups who recognize this evening. We'll begin with the Bridge the Gap Initiative. Dr. Goff, you'd like to introduce some?
Yes, Allison O'Hara, teacher at Johnson Middle School, is going to explain the Bridge the Gap Initiative and what Johnson Middle School students were able to do with our council on aging. I'm not going to say too much because every time I say everything, then I steal everybody's thunder.
I don't have a voice.
I can fill in.
Susan Rassicott is coming in. Hey, Jayber. And Kayla is our student. We have two more who's got the flu.
Our students were able to come today. So I'm Susan Stuart Rassicott. I'm the librarian at Johnson Middle School. And Allison O'Hara and I have been doing Bridging the Gap for four years now. We teach a class called informational reading writing to our seventh graders. And this all started when one of our students, our seventh grade students, was interested in NASCAR. And Allison's father was a NASCAR driver. And so we kind of talked about pairing them together and creating some interesting stories. About the same time, Rich McCarthy had joined the picture. He was volunteering at the senior center and wanted to pair up some students with his seniors over there. So it implemented itself kind of from there.
Took off.
So the stories that we have written about are wide-ranging. And they include a lot of career and job experiences that our seniors have had. Childhood memories. And some of the things are historical in nature. Like the Lysker incident gets talked about a lot. The assassination of JFK and other historical events. Polio. So the students learn the human part of the story by interviewing their senior. And they get research skills through researching the event that the senior is talking about. So we kind of put those all together. The students write their stories. And we cap it off with a visit to the senior center. Do you want to speak some more, Bill?
No, that's okay. Let's flip to the next one.
Okay. And this is Kayla's story. This is Kayla O'Hara.
Surviving since the Jurassic era. Disgusting fact, the ginkgo tree drops a smelly pod with seeds in it. Without this adaptation, the ginkgo tree might not have survived over 200 million years. If you want to hear more about this fascinating tree, you need to have a conversation with Marion Morrison.
We were hoping she could come. I don't see her anymore.
My story goes on to tell information about the ginkgo tree evolution and facts about this amazing tree. My story also contains Ms. Morrison's experiences with the ginkgo tree, such as when she first saw the ginkgo tree and how it affected her life.
Thank you so much.
That's typical of what we do, but each student has their turn. There were 73 of them, so it goes on quite a long time. But it's beautiful. You did such a beautiful job, Kayla.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
So what we end up doing is bringing all the students on a field trip to the senior center. And they repeat just what Kayla did with each one of their seniors and their story.
Do you want to give them your book?
And then at the end, we make these books up with all the stories in it, so you can hand them out. Each one of you can have a book.
Thank you, Kayla.
If you could just flip to the next slide. We just want to show you a few of the, just a sampling of some of the stories. So this is a local business. So this student learned about starting businesses and how to grow your business. This one is about Rich McCarthy. And we learned about the Air Force honor guard and his role in that. And the evolution of Walpole baseball was fascinating. This boy's grandfather was on the first team in Walpole once Walpole Little League started.
He was actually instrumental in that one. Grandfather is one of those little boys down there.
And he had his hat and he brought his hat to our celebration. Okay. And then we had some famous people. Sorry. You guys all know him? Yes. And even just a lot of stories. What did you say? It was beautiful.
Well, this was one of the really sweet ones where Grace wanted to learn about how her grandparents met. So she taught all about their marriage of many years and how they met. It was very, very sweet.
Yep. And Bob Murphy's a teacher. He was a teacher here. And so he participates. So we have people from all of Walpole participating. And BJ, you want to talk a little bit about?
We just talked about this is some of the ways that we shared it out. So they have, the students get to share their work with the live presentation at the senior center, the published book, so they learn some publishing skills. We also created a digital version of the, that book, which we'll share out. Rich sends it to other folks who are in the program who want to get it. Who aren't in Walpole. And we share it on our social media.
And this might be the copy of the book. We do a digital version of the book that you just received.
Looks like it's good.
We actually use this digital version in the class. We have it posted in the Google Classroom for the new students to read, so they understand what it is and what we're looking for them to do. There you go.
That's cool.
Technology. That's Bridging the Gap?
Yes.
Any questions or anything?
Questions from the committee? This is Galavan.
I was just wondering, some people have a member of their family or somebody that they want to interview. And then in other cases, you make matches. Is that right?
Yes, that's what we call it. We call it adopting the senior.
Oh, that's nice.
Rich takes care of all of them. He has a whole list. And he harasses them.
That's great.
Yes, it's all done through email.
So can I ask Kayla, did you know the person personally, or did you get matched up with somebody?
I got matched up with her.
It's an interesting story. That's great.
They actually met on the day of the field trip and got to sit together. And so Kayla presented with her.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Actually kept in touch, which I didn't know. Kayla still chats with her through email.
That's great. That's ideal. That's what you would like. Good.
Relationships are definitely torn.
Further questions? I know, you know, we're just so grateful for this partnership and it's cool. We have a nice big building where we can take 70 students from Johnson over to do this. And I think it's a great thing. And I know Rich has worked very closely with us, a Walpole High School former, a Walpole former public school employee himself, to continue to find ways to bring our students together with our seniors and unite our community. I believe if I look at Dr. Goff's notes, that Mr. McCarthy has something for you. So Mr. McCarthy, if you'd like to come up for a moment?
First of all, I want to take time tonight to thank the school committee and Allison and Susan allowing the senior center to get involved with this program. They look forward to it, and it's unbelievable how much they look forward to meeting the kids when they show up for the presentation. So, and I look forward to expanding it. And my fear is, is that Bird's going to get online and do the same thing. And then I'll have to try to find triple the amount. Because it's a Dr. Grandparent type thing. The student doesn't have a grandparent. And so we tried to fill in the gap. And I've got people from California, Colorado, Florida that have participated in it. So it's United States-wide. She doesn't want me to go across the ocean. And Nancy, you'll be invited for the second session that we do. On behalf of the Walpole Council of Adrian, I want to present Allison and Susan with a certificate of appreciation for this year's program. And we look forward to the next second half of it.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I hope we'll always do more stuff as we have a new program director that's also on the Norton School Committee. And she wants to utilize the students on some of our programs. So we will be working together to do that. So thank you very much.
Great stuff. Thank you.
Great job.
Excellent. Moving on, our second recognition is certificates of academic excellence. We have, Dr. Goff?
Yes. So Walpole High School student Andrea Wilbur, and I believe Stephen Colleran was unable to be here tonight. Do you have, you have the certificates? Oh, she has. Thank you. And Stephen's unable to be here tonight. But they've been, both of them have been chosen to receive the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent Certificates of Excellence. This award is given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. Andrea Wilbur has been a member of student council since her freshman year. Andrea now serves as president, but she has been an integral member throughout her four years on the council. She has run many events, including the Pink Walk, freshman orientation, and the Special Olympics Unified Bocce Tournament. Aside from student council, Andrea plays ice hockey, has worked on multiple films for the film festival, is a member of the National Honor Society, and green team. And as well as working part-time at Camilla's in Westwood. I don't know, do you have time to sleep? She hopes to study public relations, business, and communications in college. So we'd like to congratulate Andrea and have her come up and receive her award.
Andrea, would you like to say a few words?
Well deserved. I've known Andrea for several years and, you know, excellent student, always willing to go above and beyond. And I'm glad you're well deserving of this award. Nice job. I just want to say a few words about Steve. I know he couldn't be here. But he is captain on both the indoor and outdoor track teams. And last June, he was part of the SMR relay team that won a national championship. Steve is a high achieving AP and honors student who continuously goes above and beyond to help his fellow classmates. Besides track, Steve is a member of the math team and the National Honor Society. He plans to run track and study physics or engineering at Boston College. So we'd like to congratulate him as well. So Andrea, you're welcome to stay. But I think with this schedule, like I'm sure you probably have something to do either tonight or first thing tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next order of business, we have Mr. Scotty Cameron, who will report on the goings-on of the high school. Representative Cameron, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scotty Cameron. I'm a sophomore at Walpole High School, and tonight I'll be representing Walpole High School. Walpole High School is very busy right now, as always. And we are continuing to strive for excellence in all of our aspects of our education and enrichment. Our sports teams are battling with many teams eyeing playoff spots for the next coming weeks. The boys' basketball team has had a very difficult season, but they are still working towards getting a few more wins before the end of the season. Their next game is tomorrow against Braintree. The girls' basketball team is excelling with a record of eight and four, and also play their next game tomorrow against Braintree. The boys' varsity hockey team is five, four, and four, and they play Braintree on Saturday. The girls' hockey team is also challenging hard, and they play Braintree on Saturday. The boys' wrestling team has a winning record thanks to their hours of work and practice. They have a match today. The girls' gymnastics team has faced some very skilled competition and are hoping to get a few wins before the end of the season. The boys' and girls' track teams both won their leagues, which is the first time in school history that both teams have done so in the indoor season. Many of the athletes will continue their seasons on into the incoming weeks in hopes to qualify for more competitive meets. In addition to sports, Walpole High School is also excelling in other activities. Last Friday, the Bus Buddies Club went to Norwood Sports Center, where they went bowling and had some snacks. The Bus Buddies Club also collaborated with the student council to host a Special Olympics Bocce Tournament, where they hosted hundreds of people. The Bocce competition unifies students with disabilities and their peers to have fun and play Bocce. This event promotes an inclusive school community and is a fun event to watch and play. The math team is currently five out of the 30 schools in Massachusetts. They need to be in the top five to go to All-States. So they will keep working until their next meet next Wednesday. On Wednesday, the speech and debate team is hosting a fundraiser at Conrad's, where 15% of the proceeds that Conrad gets goes to the team. They need this money so they can continue to fund, so they can continue to attend very competitive speech events. Many student musicians are trying out this weekend for the All-State Band, which is one of the hardest musical groups to get into in the entire state. If they get in, the students will play at a music festival in late February. Additionally, the green team is running a textile collection in the bins outside of the school, where the school will receive some money for the amount donated. Lastly, the school is offering some more amazing trips for the new school year. One trip is the Washington DC trip, where students will get to go to the nation's capital for the week of the 2020 presidential election. Another trip is the community service trip up to Thailand. In short, the school is very busy through sports, enrichment, and community service, and most importantly, education, as the third term begins. Thank you for investing your time in all of us students, because we really appreciate all that you do. And I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Scotty, how'd you do with mid-years?
Well, I had a band mid-year, and I haven't gotten it back yet.
We'll wait for a follow-up report then. More questions for Mr. Cameron?
Great job.
Very good. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Please feel free to stay. Excellent. Moving on to new business, we have a number of field trip requests. We begin with an out-of-state field trip request for the Boydton School, Grade Two, to Stadium Theater Performing Arts Center in Woonsocket, Rhode Island on June 3rd, 2020.
Evening, everyone. You hear say field trips for Thailand, Quebec, Ecuador. We're looking to go to Rhode Island. So our Grade Two students are looking to go to Professor Wow's fun believable science show. And as you heard, that's in the Stadium Theater in Woonsocket, Rhode Island. This is a unique and engaging experience that the teachers could not find anywhere locally. And that's why they're requesting to go out of state. During the show, the students will see vignettes in the area of life science, physical science, astronomy, and ecology. And each vignette incorporates audience participation and keeps the kids fully engaged. This completely aligns with the Grade Two science standards. And there'll be about 62 students we're looking to bring to that field trip. So we are asking for the request to move on with that field trip.
Excellent. Questions on the committee?
Motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Boydton Second Grade to Woonsocket, Rhode Island.
Second. Motion by Mr. Donizio, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Have a nice trip. We have another out-of-state field trip request for Walpole High School to Washington DC for November the 1st to November the 5th, 2020. Ms. Rafferty?
Hi, I'm Samantha Rafferty. As Scotty has already mentioned, I'm here tonight to ask for permission to go to Washington DC with a group of high school students for the week of the election. That means leaving on Sunday, November 1st, and returning on Friday, November 6th. And obviously, 2020 is a very exciting year with the election actually taking place. So this is a unique opportunity for the students to be able to be in the nation's capital while the election is taking place. The program has been run through Walpole High School for several years. There's some teachers at the high school who actually went while they were in high school. And I've been, personally been on the trip to other occasions. I went for the 2016 election week and another week in January of 2018. And both times were arranged between 15 and 20 students. When I held an informational meeting last week, there were 41 students that came for information. I don't anticipate 41 students being on the trip. But the interest is obviously there. The experiences that they have while they're down there, they get to go to the museums, they get to go to the monuments. But really, the best experience that they have there is meeting students from all across the country. Last time that we went, there were students from Puerto Rico and Guam. So they get to meet, obviously still part of the United States, but from places that they probably would never meet another person. There are students from Washington and Texas. And so one of the key elements is that they interact with those students. They talk about key policy issues. They listen to experts for liberal policy and conservative policy. They engage in a mock congress. There's a trip to the Capitol Building. It's usually on the Wednesday after the election. So more than likely, our representatives will not be there, just because both Senator Markey and maybe possibly Senator Warren would probably be in Massachusetts at the time. But we do get to meet with their staff, which would be really exciting. And then it's, we do also on Tuesday night have an election watch party, where they rent out a restaurant, they watch the live results roll in. They're with all their friends and food, party kind of environment, which is really exciting. And it's fully, there's 24-hour on-call staff, and they're fully monitored all the time. They get to fly down there, and they get to stay in a hotel. So that's the other exciting element for them. Might be their first time on a plane. But basically, it's, the cost is approximately $1,600. With, there's kind of two options for deposits. There's an early bird deposit of $200 that would be due the end of next week if it were to get approved, which obviously is a very quick turnaround. But that early bird option, in reality, only saves about $50 from the trip. And so then the final price will be posted at the expiration of the early bird period. And a $500 deposit wouldn't be due until the end of the school year to secure a spot. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, big nutshell, but yes.
Questions on the committee? I have, but you?
Will you be staying right in the city?
So the last two years, we've stayed in Arlington in a hotel. And we, it's a five-minute walk to the metro. And so the students, we walk to the metro and we take the train into the city.
And the other thing I just want to say is I appreciate the lead time on the deposit. I feel like that's very reasonable. It's, it sounds like it'll be about a third of the cost for the deposit. But you're giving them several months.
Yeah, and especially with high school students, they can work over the summer.
Right.
So the final payment isn't due, and I think it's September 17th.
Thank you.
Excellent. Further questions? Ms. Galavan?
Can you just explain, like, the chaperoning part of it? They have staff, and we send some chaperones to, right?
Yes. So at the moment, I'm the only 100% chaperone. And we kind of base it on the number of students that attend. So the one year that there were 16 students, I was the only chaperone. But the 2018 year, we had 21 or 22 students, and I had another chaperone with me as well. There are some other interested people here who might be the other chaperone. And so just, we kind of play it by ear in terms of number from Walpole High School that are chaperones. But there's the 24-hour on-staff from the close-up program. So like overnight, they have them stationed in the hallways, and they're with them all the time. They run a separate teacher program during the day as well. So while the students are doing their program, they offer professional development opportunity for the teacher chaperones.
That's great. We do have a one-to-10 ratio.
Right.
So, you know, that's just something to keep in mind.
Right, of course.
Further questions? You think it'll take him Scotty or is he like on the bench?
He's invited. I might interfere with cross-country season, so.
May have a motion.
Motion to approve the field trip.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Muccini. All those in favor? Sorry, opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thanks.
Segueing quite nicely, we now have our third piece of new business, the civic curriculum update. Mr. Donigan?
Yes, thank you. Nice to see everybody. Hopefully, everybody's staying healthy up there. I did put a little bit more together than just the civic update, but not a considerable amount. There were really four things that I wanted to briefly talk about. One, the 612 curriculum changes that are going to be taking place both this year and in the coming years to line up with the new frameworks. Then specifically talk about the eighth-grade civics course, which is running for the first time this year. Then the civic engagement projects, and then a little bit about AP Psychology, which we ran for the first time last year. And I just included up there a link to the Walpole High School Social Studies website. I've been putting updates the last few years about our representatives at Boys and Girls State, our representatives at Mass Star, our students who have gone to Student Government Day. So I've got some nice quotes and pictures of those students attending those events. So, first thing is the alignment of curriculum 612. So the 2018 frameworks were released in June of 2018. And during last school year, there was a social studies task force that a couple of people who are sitting up there were a part of. And four teachers from the high school, four teachers from the middle school. We were investigating the guiding principles, practice standards, and content standards that were in the couple hundred-page document that came from the state. And as a result of those meetings, we adopted a new 6-12 path and some historical thinking and research and writing expectations for sixth through 11th grade. In, during this school year, we have new courses running in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to reflect the changes in that document. So if you look at the left, that's what the courses were in the old path. So the biggest changes are the sixth-grade geography course no longer exists. Instead, what has happened is geography has moved, the specific study of geography, to sixth and seventh grade in Geography and Ancient Civilizations 1 and 2, where there is now a geographic study of the world instead of a purely chronological study of world history that was taking place in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. The biggest addition is obviously the eighth-grade civics class, which I'm going to talk about. And what we're going to be implementing in the future, the next couple of years at the high school, is some modified courses at the high school, which are going to be looking at different eras. The world history course in ninth grade is going to be shifting its beginning of the year earlier. So instead of beginning at the Enlightenment, moving back and starting at the Renaissance and Reformation. United States history in 10th grade is going to cover a larger period of time. So instead of ending in the 1890s, it's going to move through World War I. And then the biggest change at the high school is going to be in 11th grade. We're going to have a course we're going to call U.S. in the Modern World, where we're going to be looking at American history and world history parallel from the end of World War I to the modern era. And that was really a result of some very long discussions and the state telling us that there were four high school courses that they recommended us teaching in three years. So that was the compromise that we came to with that. So if we're looking at the implementation timeline, what I have up there is every time you see one in red, it's when a new course is running for the first time. So this year's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade courses are the new modified curriculum from the 2018 frameworks. And what we're going to be doing in the high school is following the eighth-grade class. So when this year's eighth graders are in ninth grade next year, they're going to get the world history that moves earlier in time. When this year's eighth-grade class is in 10th grade, they're going to get the U.S. history class. class that goes a little bit further into history. And this year's eighth-grade class will be the first class to take the US in the Modern World as the junior year requirement. So eighth-grade civics, which is probably the biggest change from the state, I know I was here to talk a little bit about last year as we were in our planning stages. These are the seven units of study that they are learning about in this class in addition to the civic engagement project, which I'll talk about momentarily. And I thought, instead of trying to talk about what we're trying to do with the eighth-grade civics class, I asked the eighth-grade teachers to ask their students some questions so we could pull some quotes from them about what their experience have been in the class this year. So the first question we asked is, what have you liked about civics this year? And so we have, I liked how I could understand the news due to the many things we've learned in civics. I liked learning about what rights I have as an American citizen. And I liked that it gives us an understanding about how our government works. It also gives us an understanding about things that will be important to us in the future, such as the Bill of Rights. And these are all from JMS Bird, did share responses with me, but theirs were in PDF and not as easy to put on the presentation. Second question we asked them is, what have you learned in civics this year? One is in civics, we've learned about the requirements and rights of citizens. We've learned about other civilizations that greatly influenced our own. And we've learned about our own government and how it's structured. We've also deciphered the Articles of Confederation, Constitution, Declaration of Independence, Federalist Papers, and the Bill of Rights. I learned how our country began, how it was formed, how the founding fathers failed and then succeeded in making a document that could rule our country. We've also analyzed many historical documents. And then one more, I've learned many things while taking this course. I learned where our ideas for the US government came from, how the Constitution was crafted, the Bill of Rights, and many other things. I've also learned about some things currently going on, which have had to do with things we are learning in the class. At the time, at the time. And the last question that we asked, is there anything you've learned this year that you felt is currently or will eventually be particularly important to you? I think learning about important documents was important because I think we should know our rights as citizens and the laws that we have to follow. We've been talking about the current events as we learn about the history of the United States, learning about the Bill of Rights as well, because these are the rights that we have as Americans and most of us don't know the rights. And yes, they were asked these questions while they were in the middle of studying the Bill of Rights. That's where we get a lot of hits on that one. But I think the whole idea of civics is important to me because I live in this country and it's important to know about our government. So I think each, from the nine different students we pulled quotes from, it's been pretty positive this year. I know the teachers have really enjoyed the change and as they're going through the course this year are already recognizing, I really liked the way I did this, I would do this a little bit different next year. So they're already, still going through it the first time, looking forward to doing it again next year. The other piece that's going to be a big change is the civic engagement projects. And I know I'm the one up here talking for you, but I'm definitely not the expert in the room when it comes to the civic engagement project. And there are a couple of things I pulled from DESI about the student-led civics projects. These should be student-led, project-based, real-world, rooted in understanding systems, impact, goal-driven, inquiry-based, nonpartisan, process-focused, and action-based. And DESI has provided six very clear steps for what makes a civic engagement project. It should begin with students and an entire class examining self and civic identity, then identifying an issue, researching, investigating, developing an action plan, taking action, and then reflecting and showcasing. So these are the steps. We're trying to sort of create an outline for what it's going to look like going through these the first time this spring with the eighth-grade class. During this year, DESI's organizing a civics project network, which three Walpole educators are taking part in, myself, Sam Rafferty from the high school, and Phil Jenkins from the middle school. It's a four-day conference, two meetings the fall. The next meeting is Wednesday next week, and then there's another one later in the spring. And there are teachers from all over the state who basically came together the first time and everybody said, what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing? And we've really worked through a lot with this civics project network resource the state put together and trying to figure out what's going to work for us in Walpole. We've been collecting resources, including things that existed from the middle school PBL projects, things from DESI and districts that have been doing this a while. We've met some people from districts where eighth-grade civics has been there for years and years and years, and civic engagement projects have been there for years. So we've met some people that we can communicate with and ask hypothetical questions that they can respond to us with real-world answers. And we're preparing to introduce the projects in the spring in eighth grade and next year at the high school. But one of the most interesting things about this is we're going to have teachers, students in the community in large numbers in the coming months, and we definitely need help. We know there are going to be a number of challenges, but there are also going to be some unexpected challenges. So I'm really asking you guys, if you have advice, if you have suggestions for how to get our students, teachers, and schools engaged in the community, do you have any specifically suggested contacts? And obviously, we don't have to have this conversation right here, right now, but you are a resource that we could really benefit from. And any advice that you have on notifying community groups, notifying us of individuals that you know would be willing to work with us, any and all help would be truly appreciated. And then the very last thing I wanted to talk about was AP Psychology. AP Psychology existed for a long time as an online class at the high school. There had never been a teacher until last year. And going back and pulling some of the results from those previous years, our students didn't have a whole lot of success. And Matt Gittgen, he spent about a year doing professional development and planning to teach this course before he taught it. Last year was the first time that the course ran. We had sixty students take the course. And I think it was an incredible success, both in the classroom and also the results we see from our students. So I just wanted to let you guys know about that change from last year and really give Matt a pat on the back for a job well done.
That's remarkable.
Ms. Muccini?
Just about the AP, so how many, excuse me, I have a little voice problem tonight too. How many sections are running right now?
This year, one.
Will there be an expansion in that next year?
Well, we ran three last year with the sixty students. We had thirty-four students register this year but ran one section. So we have thirty students in the class. So it really just depends on some of our other numbers, some of our other classes. I would have liked to have run two sections, but really tried specifically to keep the numbers in our CP2 classes low. So again, I, if the numbers warranted, I'd love to run two or three sections again.
Further questions? Mrs. Gallin.
As I was not knowing exactly what you were going to cover tonight, you did cover some of the things that I'm interested in. Current events has got to be a challenge right now. But I'm glad that you're talking about it in the eighth-grade classes because unfortunately, you're kind of on the spot because things happen, you know, without time to do professional development for your staff. Do you feel like there's anything that you need in that regard? Or is it just you're doing the best you can and you're incorporating current events into most of the history classes?
Oh, absolutely. We've talked both formally and informally with the middle school teachers, with the high school teachers, about the current challenges of bringing current events into our classes. And I've seen teachers share more resources this year about how to incorporate current events into social studies classrooms than I've seen in years past. And I think that's because people feel both a professional responsibility to talk about current events, but are also very concerned about doing so, given the nature of what's going on right now.
That's great. Good. I'm glad to hear that you're sort of embracing the challenge, because it's got to be a challenge. Kind of related to that, do we teach kids to debate a topic from the idea of, when the debate team has come and talked to us, they talk about the fact that they have to research a topic from both points of view because they don't know which point of view they're going to be told to argue from? So in other words, I think our world would be a better place if everybody had to research both sides of an argument. Are you able to build that into your history classes? Or are you sort of filled with so many topics that you have to get through that you don't have much opportunity for that?
We probably don't have the opportunity to go in the same depth as the students on the debate team.
Sure.
But when presenting issues, we're continually presenting both sides and sort of having students, you know, say why would they have supported a particular candidate or a particular course of action. We do include a lot of research that gives our students options for what to research, but not necessarily requiring them specifically to research both sides and then, you know, present on one, like the debate team example. But yes, we're definitely giving them a lot of, a lot to digest and sort of explain themselves connected to what they've studied.
That's great. I do think it's important to talk to them about, in order to present a strong argument, you sometimes need to understand the opposition's point of view. So, but it sounds like you got that. My last one is, do you ever give the kids a chance to take the citizenship test as they go through the high school classes?
Yes.
Yeah, I do.
Sure, sure.
So I teach US I sophomores, US II juniors, and the government elective. And so definitely, we do different time, different time periods of like citizenship tests. So the US II curriculum, we look at like literacy tests that were given in the nineteen-fifties and sixties. We look at the citizenship test, both in US II and in government, since not every student takes the government too.
Sure.
Also talking about like the, we do in government class have the just weekly or bi-weekly discussions on controversial issues that the students research. And I call them discussions, not debates, because I don't want them to fight with each other. So they have to be aware and seek in the other side as well and be able to respond to that thoughtfully, so.
That's great, thank you.
Ms. Muccini?
Well, I was just kind of interested in answering this question about the debate because Christian, my son, was a sophomore. I know he had to do a paper and a sort of a debate on electoral college and read both sides. And then he was, he chose one side, but then as he was going through it, he was like, I don't know. You know, and so I thought that was great, like he really kind of got both of these. I have to just go with the one I picked. But he had enough information to really see both sides of the argument. So I was really pleased about whether to do away with it or keep it as is, so. So I do think they're doing a good job with, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Dr. Goff.
Just Mike, thank you for, you know, organizing and facilitating the task force for the social studies for the past couple of years. I mean, there was a lot of work preparing, you know, organizing it, facilitating, implementing it with all the middle school and the high school teachers. So I know that Bill and I really appreciate your hard work and effort, so thank you.
Thank you both.
Anything further? You can send all the emails to Bill. I've gotten a few already.
Not a problem.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You also. Continuing on our civics public engagement tier here, we'll go on to our third order of new business, strategic plan goal three update.
Yeah, this up nicely for me. Between bridging the gap and this is.
Not bad.
So I'm here to present goal three. And goal three is to develop thoughtful, responsible, and engaged citizens. We have three objectives in that goal. And as you'll hear throughout all the objectives, we are reaching out to parent families in the community. They're part of each one of the objectives within there. So the first objective, three-point-one, is to provide students with opportunities to engage in inclusive, positive, and respectful school culture. And that's done in all of our schools. There's core values and cultures in each of the schools that is valued differently in each of the schools. There are different core values. I know for the high school, they, last year, they had the pride stuff. Each of the elementary schools have like their own kind of initiative, like Fisher has swim. We have like our own kind of core values. So it's different in each of the schools, but it's all kind of around the same type of topics. And that's something that we value. We have assemblies that match that. We bring in guest speakers that go along with that in our everyday teaching around social emotional development, is speaking about that in our classrooms as well. I think one of the also things that, I know the high school does an amazing job is with all the clubs that they have to offer. That is also a piece that they're starting to bring new opportunities for students. We're trying to bridge that down into the, I think the middle school also does a nice job. The elementary school is looking to get more and more involved in some clubs and activities for students to be able to kind of embrace their school culture. At least at Boyd, we're going into our third years having a play. And some of the students that involved in that activity are students that we typically wouldn't see on stage and it, you know, goes nicely into the bird play and they get an opportunity as they move forward. And we're looking at other clubs and each of our schools have student councils that support those things as well. So that's going to be, you know, as we continuously pull those, put those things together, it is important that we are informing families about those and with, through social media or snapshots, to let them know about those great opportunities around our inclusive and school cultures in each of our schools. So our second objective is three-point-two, and that's establish local relationships by connecting our students with community stakeholders. And I think, you know, a perfect example is what you heard tonight is bridging the gap. I think that's, you know, if we could have more of those things in our schools, it would be tremendous. I think what you just heard about looking for help, it's not an easy undertaking. And as they were mentioning, you know, looking for those community initiatives and those volunteer opportunities for students, we are currently putting together like a database that of all the community service projects that we do in our schools, as well as volunteer opportunities that are available for our students just within our schools. You know, there's opportunities at our elementary where we need middle school and high school students. Often, it's alumni of that elementary school that comes back and helps. But we're trying to identify those things and then start to breach, reach out to our community members to see where our students, elementary or pre-K possibly, all the way up to seniors in high school, all having an opportunity to volunteer and work within the community. So I think it's an important piece that we're going to continue to look at. One of the action steps in there is develop a networking night with local stakeholders. I think it's kind of lofty if you look at the completion date of this June. I don't think that's, that's going to take a little bit longer to kind of put together. I think we have to identify opportunities and then start looking at what community stakeholders we can kind of bring together to help us with that. And our third action step is to develop ethical students who value multiple perspectives and demonstrate responsible citizenship. And as you just heard, aligning the history and social science frameworks, K to twelve, the eighth grade has done an amazing job of that. We will be looking at that at the elementary level over the next year or so. There's a lot of changes in standards in curriculum across the elementary level. So to be, in case any of the elementary teachers are watching, I don't want to overwhelm them. It's going to be a slow rollout as, you know, they were taking on new science standards the last few years and looking at different standards. Their ELA standards have changed over the years, a new math scoping sequence. So we do want to be cautious of overwhelming them too much. I think they're doing an amazing job at the middle school and high school level to begin to roll those out now. One of the things that when we think of citizenship, it's also the digital world as well. So I think that's an important thing that we are focusing on at all our levels. I know at our elementary schools, our digital learning coaches are doing digital citizenship lessons. Not only are they kind of self-standing lessons, they're also, when they're in working on curriculum and talking about a project in ELA, they're incorporating some good digital practices within their lessons, so it's not a standalone as we, you know, start to put technology and curriculum more together. more together. I know that that happens at the middle school level as well. And then the high school level is, I'm sure, continuously discussing that. Again, we need to provide families with snapshots of that, so they're able to see the great things that are going on. That not only helps families, that will also help other community members that are connected in social media to say, oh, wow, that's an amazing opportunity that those students were at this particular, whether it be a nonprofit or whether it be a business. And then they hopefully will see the good things to get involved on, with their, with their businesses or nonprofits. So that's kind of goal three in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions or any concerns. We will be meeting, obviously, you know, in the next week to discuss this further. And I think, you know, I'm kind of looking forward to that as, you know, we've gone over this goal over the last few weeks, just to kind of see all the great things we're doing, but also maybe kind of hone us in and get us a little bit more specifically focused over the next year or so.
Questions for Principal Dearborn? I have a couple.
Go ahead, you go first.
This is great. And I think I'm excited to see, you know, us working towards building a compendium of service opportunities. I know increasingly, whether it be scholarship applications or other applications to the National Honor Society, there's that service requirement component. I would love the public schools to be the sort of clearinghouse and hub to which, you know, students look for that connectivity. The other thing, and I was texting my colleague on the Marshfield School Committee as you were talking, thinking about what they do, and he will send me the information, just kick over to you guys, they do a like community service day in September where they, much like what Keepalpaw Beautiful does, but on a much larger scale where students are sent out to assist senior citizens, maybe with fall cleanups, and they're doing some trash pickup, and there's maybe some repainting and other types of things. So I think that, that might be something as we get into maybe year two or three or four of this goal, it would be cool to, I love stealing great ideas from our neighbors and passing them off as our own. But I think that would be a great piece as well. But I, I just wanna thank you for that. And the, I would love to also assist you, and I think we have some great people like Rich, like John Mulligan with Community Treasurers, who would love to maybe in a small way begin that public service fair. I don't know what you'd even call it, but just kind of like, kind of like a college fair, but for stuff to help out around the town.
Yeah, and I think, I think students would be, I think right now, you know, they're not really sure where to go.
That's, I think that's.
So, you know, I'd love to build my resume for my college to show that I'm providing community and that types of things. And that's what they're thinking. But how do I do that? And if we could set some kind of a structure and place for them to be able to go and see the opportunities, whether they're within our schools or whether they're within our community, I think that would really go a long way. I know the National, as we mentioned, the National Honor Society has that requirement. But I think there's other students that aren't on the National Honor Society that would love to be able to give back to their community in unique ways, whether it be helping with young students that are preschool, or working in a senior center, or volunteering, you know, at somewhere else across the town or local towns.
Further thoughts, Mrs. Galvin?
Just a couple of things. The community service day that Bill just mentioned, I've heard that Andrea Wilber, who was here earlier tonight, is trying to do something at the high school this year. I don't know if you've heard anything about it yet, Scotty.
I know she's mentioned it. Like last year, she wanted to do something on the half day, like before prom. I can't remember exactly, but she wanted to do something at the end of the year, but it was too hectic. But I'm sure she's still thinking to plan another event sometime this.
That's just a connection. I mean, it probably would be, you have to start, and something doesn't have to be full-blown the first time you do it. But I heard that sometime in April that she was trying to, and maybe it's through student council, I don't, I don't know. But I think that there are some high school kids that are interested in being part of that. So that's, that's a potential resource. The other thing is, you were talking about how every school has core values and they have assemblies around those. It reminded me, do we do anything around the holidays, like Martin Luther King Day and Veterans Day or Memorial Day too? Explain to the students why they're having the day off. Like, do we do assemblies or something like that?
I think each school is different.
Okay.
You know, and I think there's lessons that happen within the classroom and discussions that happen around literature, or, you know, Martin Luther King and what he meant to our country. You know, I can speak for Boyd, and we do, one of, Mrs. Galvin does, I'm sitting there, but I know it's Mrs. Galvin.
Gotcha.
She does a large Veterans Day assembly to honor the veterans. And we, you know, her class brings in and honors a veteran there. So we do that whole kind of thing as a school. Each of the schools does their own type of stuff. But I'm wondering if we should identify more areas that we ensure that our students are learning about, you know, not only the reason they're getting the day off, but, you know, why, you know, they're getting the day off, but why are they getting that day off and what that means to them.
To me, that's part of citizenship. That's why, you know, just sort of thought about it as, as we were talking. But thank you.
Just a quick idea. At my school, a student, an eighth grader this year, actually came up with the idea of hosting a Veterans Day breakfast. So it was the day before Veterans Day. Students invited veterans they knew, whether it was family members, neighbors, what have you. So you had young veterans, you had grandparents. And they had breakfast with the students, and some of them got up and spoke. And it was very, very cool. And the fact that it initiated with a student was, made it that much cooler. But maybe we can, something like that kind of hits the goals on a lot of different levels.
It does, yeah. And if you want a perspective, it just, you know, at a different age, you know.
So like the idea of acknowledging these holidays and kind of the civic, you know, aspect of it, but also bringing the community in could be very powerful.
That's great, yeah.
Further questions or thoughts? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher? We will now have our mid-year FY twenty budget review and FY twenty fiscal side.
So in your package is the detail of our budget. For those who can't see it or are watching, our budget is divided into four categories. The salaries, which are regular ed and special ed, and then goods and services, which are also regular ed and special ed. Our appropriated budget, our total budget that was approved at town meeting was forty-six million, oh ninety-two, eight thirty-five. We had some transfers in into each one of those items that totaled five hundred ninety-two thousand, eight seventy-one. Those are detailed below in the offset revenues. So just a quick snapshot, when we look at those monies that are transferred in, our Medicaid funding, which is reimbursement for medical services that the district receives, that totaled five hundred fifty-eight thousand, four seventy-one this year. We also collect parking fees up at the high school, and that's also transferred in. The Medicaid funding goes towards salaries and our extended school year program. And the parking goes toward offsetting our yellow bus contract. So those total five ninety-two, eight seventy-one. Below that is our circuit breaker funding, one million, six hundred twenty thousand, three eighty. That money goes towards, comes in in quarterly payments throughout the year, and it is applied against special education tuitions. So we apply that, and that's, tuitions are moved out of our budget into the circuit breaker account. That's how that's a little different than Medicaid. So our total offsets of revenue this year outside of our budget, our appropriated budget, were two million, two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty-one. So I'm gonna just do our year-to-date expended. So far this year, we've expended sixteen million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That includes all salaries and goods and services up to this point. We have encumbrances, which is money that is set aside earmarked for particular items that is in our salaries as well as our goods and services. And that total amount is thirty million, oh seventy-six, seven ten. So that leaves some remaining balances in each line item, which total eighty-four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. So out of a forty-six million dollar approximately budget, we're looking at about eighty-four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. At this point, that would be remaining if everything was exactly as it were today, and that's how we ended the year. That won't be the case, as we'll vary, just to be open and honest about it. That is less than one percent of our budget, significantly less than one percent. If you were to ask what items I'm concerned about at this point, it would be a similar conversation to last year. Same items are LTS, long-term subs. We continue to have, like last year, a lot of medical leaves, maternity leaves, things that we have a budget for. But to give you context, at this point in the year, we've exhausted that budget. So how do we pay for these expenses? When somebody goes out for a medical reason, let's say for example, if they don't have enough accrued sick time to last that entire leave, then there are unpaid days in that. And those unpaid days save us in our budget. We can use that accumulated funding to pay for the long-term sub in that position. And it's about two to one. So a teacher on average makes about three hundred a day, sub gets paid about a hundred and fifty a day. So you can see each day a teacher's out pays for two days of a long-term sub coverage. So I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think it'll be very similar to last year, and I think we'll be fine. I don't see anything outside of that that I'm alarmed about. Right now, we're, I'm waiting for our bus contract to come back, but I think our estimates will be accurate there as far as that costs. Happy to answer any other questions about this year's budget.
Questions for Mr. Fisher? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At the request of Dr. Goff, if it would please the committee, she'd like to do her superintendent report before we go on to the next fiscal year's budget.
You'll see how they, if you haven't noticed that already, so thank you for that. So in August, as one of the components for the Massachusetts new superintendent induction program, I developed an entry plan. And that was really to continue our focus on teaching and learning. And it was to gain a deeper understanding of the district, identify areas of strength, and then look at some opportunities for growth. So the outcome will be the basis for a development of a strategy that will help guide our work. And if you look at that screen, although I've been in the school system for, I think this is my twenty-eighth year, so we'll just say many years. And it really provided me an opportunity to take a fresh look at the district. So between July and December, I systematically collected, you know, qualitative and quantitative data, analyzing state and district documents, and then also looking at, in both individual and group interviews with a wide variety of stakeholders. So that ranged from meetings with parent groups, community leaders, student groups, town officials, and staff. And then I also, you know, visit schools, I continue to visit schools, attending community and district events, and participating in district-wide and community-wide meetings. So really what happened is, the goals of this report is that, you know, I was able to identify these three prevailing themes. And what those themes are, they really emerge from a process that will enable us to develop a strategy for improvement. These, they represent patterns, they do not represent solutions. Still require some further discussions and investigations as we develop these strategies together. I do wanna note that and state that I'm grateful for all of those who gave their time to provide such honest and open feedback. The process has really strengthened my appreciation for the community and for the Wapo public school system. So it was, it was a great exercise to go through. So looking at the first theme, theme one, focused on opportunity to learn and meeting the needs of all of our students. And those are some of our elementary students. And the one at the far right is Shannon Finley implementing the writing program for our literacy program. So some strengths that were found to group them throughout my conversations, overwhelmingly, there was a widespread agreement that Wapo Public Schools is a high-performing district that keeps an eye on student learning. Numerous parents communicated to me that they moved to Wapo because of the school system. And they mentioned dedicated staff that really providing individual student needs and also providing a nurturing environment. In addition to some diverse curriculum offerings, the district, the stakeholders and community members and staff really focused, felt like they focused, the district focuses on the whole child. Most notable was the extracurricular programming. Many, many people, it was overwhelming, commented on the programs available at the high school, such as the robotics, the film festival. And then also commented on the variety of student leadership opportunities at the middle and the high school level. Also, that our commitment to social emotional learning, the district is really recognized for the progress that we've made in that commitment to SEL. And that was also not only curriculum, but the resources that the school committee supported, noticing the adjustment counselors, the psychologist, and the high school counselors, the SEL steering committee that was developed to go ahead and create a climate survey and audit practices. And even, you know, parents have commented, I wrote in the report, one parent commented on the priority of the whole child, and another parent said, teachers and administration give their time above and beyond to develop relationships. Also, the district continues to serve our special needs population. There are many in-district programs to educate their students in the home community, and this is commendable. Less than one percent of the student population resides in outside placements. Parents have quoted that staff is proactive in making suggestions for my child. My child is getting what he needs, and it's a partnership. For the past three years, the district has also been committed to reduce full-day kindergarten tuition, and the goal to create equitable opportunities for all children to have the opportunity to attend full-day kindergarten. So this seven-year plan has reduced the number of students attending kindergarten part-time from nineteen percent in two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen to four percent in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And in the last three years, full-day attendance has increased by ten percent. And opportunities for financial aid is now available. So those were, those were some notable strengths. Opportunities for inquiry. So a review of the assessment data, it does show that Wapo Public Schools achieves at high levels. And in terms of accountability, the two thousand and nineteen data yielded that there was substantial progress toward achieving targets that was noted for the Wapo Public Schools. However, as we know with high-performing districts, there's always room, and there's still room for improvement, most notably to close the achievement gaps. And what we mean by that is the disparities in academic performance for subgroups. And those subgroups are students with disabilities, our economic status, and our English learners. Benchmarking is really needed to make sure that we continue this process, and then also be able to utilize that data in order to go ahead and, in order to improve student learning and achievement. Research also shows that there's a direct correlation between attendance and student achievement. We know that. And that DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they define chronic absenteeism as any child that is absent ten percent or more of the year. So if you look at that, it would be eighteen days out of the one hundred and eighty. That is a factor. People may not realize that, but chronic absenteeism also impacts our accountability report for our MCAS reporting. So in that, that's something that we have to take a look at, because there are certain groups and certain subgroups that have a higher chronic absenteeism than other students. So it really just shows us that we need to take a look at that, try to look at the factors, dig a little bit deeper, and see, you know, how we can get that, those rates down. Shifts in our demographic patterns have created an increase in diversity with the Wapo Public Schools. I think, looking at the data, in certain population compared to ten years ago, our Hispanic population has doubled, our Asian population has doubled, and then multiracial Hispanic has also doubled. Most notably, since October two thousand nineteen, our English learner population is at three point six percent. That was compared to two point seven, three years ago. Today, ten percent of our students' first language at home is not English, and over thirty students recently arrived in the U.S. So it just shows that, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, go up to like one forty-one in RX two. So that, that's as of the end of January. And we have over, I believe it's four hundred and forty-six students who are classified as English learners, and then also formerly limited English proficiency. So it's a large group. So it's really important that we took, take a look at how we're going to address these changes in student population and really investigate delivery models that not only that not only support the students, but support the staff to give them the tools and the skills in order to deliver this instruction and meet the needs of our learners. Although, I mentioned in the last line, the progress that we've made in SEL practices, and much has been accomplished, that it's important that we continue on this road to integrate the social-emotional practices and the competencies into the classroom. The district continues to see an increase in students who struggle with mental health challenges, and it's an opportunity also to build some, to continue to build fair and equitable practices around anything from bullying prevention practices to strengthen family-community partnerships and to focus on those castle skills that we've talked about in previous school committee meetings. The second theme is teaching and learning in the 21st century. I believe that's the green team on the right. And then some of us are familiar with programming to be bought, that's the last school committee. And I just love the picture in the middle. I mean, when you look at that face and that excitement and that energy, that's what you want to capture and keep that energy and excitement and enthusiasm all the way through graduation. So some strengths, professional development overwhelmingly, that there was a large investment and a high-level support for PD that in the 2018-2019 school year, Walpole Public School teachers took over two hundred and fifty courses. One parent had noted, or a community member noted, "Wapo does a good job putting teachers in a position to grow and learn as they gain experience." So really making the commitment, putting the pursuit of educational coursework, giving the teachers this opportunity, because we all know the PD that we can give them, the authentic PD, that's going to directly impact the instructional core and improve teaching and learning. Both students and parents commented on the diverse courses. I know I mentioned that offered at the high school. But this is also the actual courses. The advanced placement, I believe there's twenty-one AP courses at the high school. There's also seventeen sections of online courses for both advanced learners and credit recovery. And the students and parents commented on the range of courses, the personal finance, robotics, web design, journalism, television production. The fine arts was noted too. Over the years, the district has really made a commitment to rebuilding the music program, the addition of the middle school chorus teacher, looking at the middle school orchestra, the high school orchestra, also instituting after-school lesson programs, and then middle school and high school after-school ensembles. As we know, teaching and learning adapts, and we need to adapt as education constantly changes. And as you have seen at the school committee meetings, really the investment in digital learning. We've had the three-year capital plan that was supported, and also our digital learning coaches integration into the classroom. And then the high school participates in our fused partnership, and that's really for project-based and inquiry-driven learning. And then finally, the last theme is that the district has made a commitment, and it's been noted, to create several support structures, digital learning coaches being one of them, so that students have these knowledge and competencies to make sure that they adapt to the changing educational landscape. The elementary literacy coach is one example, the math coaches are some other examples. Opportunities for inquiry. We've made progress in curriculum alignment, but there is also a need to expand those opportunities of continued analysis on instructional practice to make sure the curriculum is consistent. For example, not only horizontally among all the elementary schools, but vertically as well. So for example, we're investing a lot of time, energy, and resources into this literacy program. So when they leave fifth grade, we need to take a look at what is occurring in sixth grade. And then also from eighth to ninth as well, because we need to make sure that the data, the assessment, and then also what we're doing with that, what are we doing with the data in order to have those initiatives, or not even initiatives, but the interventions, to make sure that they're authentic and that they're working to determine student progress. Elementary report cards. Both parents and teachers spoke about their dissatisfaction with the elementary report cards. Many parents expressed that they do not get a true picture of how their child is performing with the current report card system. So the report card really should be used as a basis for important tools and furthering the understanding of student growth. All high-achieving districts are restlessly looking for ways to be effective. One unintended consequence, and this is with all high-achieving districts, is the proliferation of initiatives, or what is known as initiative overload. Brendan Dearborn spoke about that. Teachers have expressed, and specifically the elementary teachers, and we recognize that, initiative overload. So it's really an opportunity to examine all of the programs we have in place. Are we identifying professional development support and targeting those structures? Because you want to make sure that we have sustainability and improvement. And then we talked about, we're having our strategic plan next week. Taking a look at the strategic plan. We have a lot of action steps. And if you look at the strategic plan, everything we put in there, and I'm guilty of it because I was part of it, one year, one-year completion rate. So what the state is looking, they call it strategies for success, is that you really take a look and identify a smaller number of ambitious goals, and then you look to provide support around that so in order to have sustainability and improvement and impact instructional core. And then, of course, many have expressed the need for improved building facilities, especially at the middle school and the high school. We know the middle school's been accepted into the feasibility period. The high school is in the middle of hiring to create the feasibility study. We're right in the process of that. So it's really an important and exciting time in the coming years for us to make some great changes and improvements. The last theme is district culture. You have the best buddies, the bank, our council on aging, and then, of course, our police and our health department with our children. So overall, stakeholders across the board, they speak positively about the Walpole Public Schools. There is a strong sense of district pride, which is great to see. Some of the comments, "Schools are inclusive and they're part of the community." One parent said, "The positive outreach for the district and that the school doors are open." Parents report that there are opportunities to get involved in their children's schools through volunteer work, through various events. They felt that there has been, over the past several years, increase in communication from the teachers and from the administrators about what's going on in the school system, and that was appreciated. We also have parent advisory councils. I have to recognize the Boosters Club, the school councils, the Friends of Music. They're strong advocates for our district program. And then we added the English Learner PAC. We also have a strong collaborative partnership. What was noted in totality was that the positive relationship with our boards, the school committee, the finance committee, the town administrator, the select board capital, all of those, building maintenance. And there was a collective agreement about the importance of collaboration and continued communication in order to maintain a high-performing district. And then it was also noted that the school committee and the leadership team were collaboratively and have great respect for one another. And then there's also a good relationship between the school committee, the administrative team, and the Walpole Teachers Association, which I think is important to note. And then we also have other community partnerships with the Walpole Cable. Was noted, the council on aging. And then hopefully, we're talking about Spark Kindness, and then our police and our fire department. So all of those together really create a nice collaborative community partnerships. Opportunities for inquiry, not necessarily a negative thing, but our leadership council, our administrative team, which consists of all the principals, the director of digital learning, our special education, our pre-service services, our business administrator, myself, Bill Hahn. We have nine new leadership positions. And those positions come both within and outside the district. So it's really an opportunity for the team to bring some fresh ideas and new perspectives to the district in order to continue to improve teaching and learning. This was both a strength and an opportunity, is that I mentioned that we have great community partnerships, but there's an opportunity to explore and partner with Walpole businesses and groups that were not as closely connected, are not as closely connected to the schools. Brendan Dearborn mentioned core values, I'm glad that he mentioned that. It ties in nicely. There is evidence about communicating our district events. We're improving our curriculum communication. But there is a need to explore opportunities to better communicate our district values. For example, each school, it was noted that each school has their own set of core values, but the school system does not have an articulated set of core values. So that's just one example. So there's a real opportunity to really articulate, communicate. Other people call it branding the district for us, and a way to connect with all stakeholders. And finally, our community and our schools, as I mentioned, experienced an increase in diversity. Throughout the years, the staff have participated in coursework of understanding identities. Bill had mentioned Kathy Lopes, with the former director of equity and inclusion, that have run some programs in our school. We send middle school students to the Anti-Defamation League Conference every year. But it's just important that we continue to do this to make sure that our students and families feel welcome since our schools are changing. And it's really an opportunity for professional development and cultural awareness and culturally responsive teaching, that the literature is reflected in our changing diversity. And then also that we should take a look at our hiring and hiring diverse staff that reflect our student population. So where do we go from here? Next steps over the spring and summer, that the findings of this report will be used to develop a strategy for district improvement. So those are some goals and some focused initiatives or objectives to promote student and learning growth. And it somehow, hopefully, will tie into the strategic planning. Some districts have their strategic planning and their strategy for district improvement. Others really have blended them and have called it a strategy for district improvement. So really taking a look. So that's going to be a discussion with the leadership team of how we look to make that happen. And that's it.
Fascinating.
Questions for Dr. Goff? Galavan.
Is there anything you need from us right now?
No.
Yeah. No, I think it's just presenting that, looking at the themes. I want to see what shakes out at strategic planning. And then we take a look at, okay, I think what we'll do is have these conversations with leadership. And then when we do our leadership retreat, that's really where we need to have some conversations of what this can look like. It was a great exercise of being able to see it, to look at where our strengths are, but also to look at where we've got some opportunities and taking a look at it from almost looking outside.
Further questions or comments?
And thank you for taking the time to interview me as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Goff. We now move on to our vote on our tentative FY21 budget.
That's me. I want to pass this down here because I don't think she receives this.
We did.
Yeah. So a lot of this, that if I wasn't presenting my entry plan, that I would be saying a lot of the strengths of the district. So really, what you just heard, all of the accomplishments of Walpole Public School. From, you know, we talked about the high-performing district. You talked the kindergarten reduction, our commitment to SEL, special education. You saw it, the community partnership, our class sizes. We really have done a lot over the years, and even looking at last year, the extracurricular program, the improved instructional supports. And I also talked about the demographic shifts that as communities change, that we're looking at these demographic patterns. And hopefully, you heard through the entry plan that you were cognizant of how both the strengths and the opportunities for growth can impact or influence our budget implications and resources, not just next year, but in the coming years as well. You know, I talked about our English learner population, our tenure span for the demographic shifts, and really looking at where do our priorities lie. Yes, we want to continue to build on a strong Walpole Public School foundation, to have no layoffs, to have no significant cuts. We've done a really good job of that. We need to continue to close those achievement gaps. That is, that's not only our accountability, but that's what we should be doing ethically, and that's what we want to do. That's why we're in this in education in the first place. We want to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our learners. The district, we talked about, we continue to see the increase in struggle in mental health. And that is just not for one subset of students, that is for all students. That includes all of our students, our students who might be struggling academically, our students who might be struggling socially emotionally, our students in the middle, and our high-achieving students. So that is everybody across the board. And then we also want to continue, we have put a lot of resources in the K-5 literacy program, and we want to continue to build that program. So looking at, and thank you, Mike, for putting this together. So if you look at this sheet, it's really the FY21 school budget request. And it's in two parts. I'm going to explain the part on the end in a minute because that's my recommendation, so we'll get there in a minute. But if you look at it, it's broken really into these two subsections. So if you look at the column of the left, that's our base budget. That's what a four percent increase looks like, and I just want to break it down. So what does that include, that increase over compared to FY20? So that is the nine hundred thousand of moving all of our current personnel forward. So that's our collective bargaining, that's our one point five percent. And that's our COLA, our STEPS. All of those groups would total the nine hundred thousand dollars. That also includes our positions that we needed to add, that additional staffings, which total approximately two hundred and fifty dollars. That's the kindergarten teacher we needed to add at Old Post Road due to the class size. That's the preschool teacher, if you remember in the ESP, that we needed to add due to the mandate. And that's also the high school math that we added, needed to add. So that comes out to two hundred and fifty thousand. Also, that includes our Medicaid shortfall of three hundred and fifteen thousand. And again, that's our billable services. So what's happening is that we're seeing a decrease of what you bill, what's educational versus what's medical. That's also our private schools are recommending members not to complete their billing documentation until they have appropriate training and clarification for mass health. And also the parent consent, you need parent consent. And I think we had talked about this last year. I actually just wanted to, in terms of Medicaid, to share a quick email because we did tell the school committee that both Dr. Quillie and Kathy Coleman, who's done yeoman's work on Medicaid collection, that they were supposed to attend the regional February training. They did receive an email on January 24th that they were postponing the regional February training because that they are prioritizing the most crucial questions. I think they had a lot of questions that came to them, some questions and concerns. And they did say that they've heard the questions and concerns, such as medical necessity, documentation requirements, and the challenge of understanding how Medicaid program guidance applies in practice to the educational setting. So they are going to find answers to these crucial questions and provide us with clear guidance. So it has been postponed until further notice. Getting back on the reductions, there is also a special education reduction. It does say two twenty-one. The actual shortfall was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, if you remember, due to our increase in tuitions and out-of-district tuitions. But we were able to reduce goods and services by fifty thousand, and there is no increase in any of the school budgets. So they're continuing to run on a base-level budget. So that shortfall decrease is two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And then it also includes a hundred and sixty thousand of the positions that we need. As I mentioned, the health and fitness, the health and fitness teacher that we need, that's a high priority due to regs. We currently have eight hundred students taking physical education. That's just the freshmen, the sophomores, and the juniors. Next year, we will be adding another two hundred and seventy-five seniors. And the goal really is not necessarily where they're all taking some type of health or wellness. And the goal really is not necessarily where they're all taking some type of health or wellness. It's not just, okay, go into the gym. It's looking at specialized classes. It could be strength training and conditioning, it could be yoga, it could be into the sports teams, it could be a ropes course. So that's really what we're looking for. The other position is the ESOL teacher, and you'll hear me talk about this till probably I'm blue in the face. That is needed because of our dramatic increase in our ELL, our English students, and even our formerly limited English proficient students. And to have that teacher to provide equity across the district and then also to help give the teachers the tools and the skills. We always say, you know, who's working with the students, but then who's also working with the staff, really to help close that gap. The third is the reduced, free and reduced. If you remember at the budget workshop, we talked about setting aside $15,000 for families that may need financial assistance so they can, in order to put the child into full day kindergarten. And then the ESP, as you know, the ESOL at the high school, in order to alleviate the numbers at the high school, they're in a little bit of different bracket because these students are applying to colleges. And then also being able to, when you get a Level 1 child in 10th grade, maybe look a little different than a child at a Level 1 or a newcomer coming into 2nd grade. And it's also to be able to get them into an ESOL, ESP, into the classrooms to provide support and just really to provide that specific instruction for them. So when you look at that, the total budget increase is 1.85 million, and that would be the increase of 4%. That's just what we need. If you go over to the second column of the five, what the 5% increase would look like, that's everything I just mentioned, and it's the addition of the elementary school counselors. And we keep talking about that, and again, I'll talk about that forever. What that would do is, right now, we've got 1.5 in each of the elementary schools. This would give them the full 2.0 that they need. And I think you've heard the elementary principals talk about that the schedule lacks consistency and routine, although it has been a huge, huge help. But having that person going from building to building, it causes a delay in support, information, and limited time to interact with teachers, with specialists, related service providers, and parents. The other thing to remember, the elementary principals do not have assistant principals. So when there is, when help is needed, they are pulled to act like the counselor. So when you, every time you pull the principal, the principal is not in the classroom, and the principal is the instructional leader of the school. So when you do not have the instructional leader of the school looking and delivering that necessary instruction, that is going to impact teaching and learning in the classroom. So I was actually over at a visit at one of the schools, and the halftime counselor was at the other school, and the principal was pulled away for one issue. And then I was going to do a walkthrough, and then the counselor needed assistance with the child. So then I ended up helping that counselor and working with her in order to help the family and make sure we could get that student back into the classroom. I just wanted to mention one quick quote from an article about the importance of counselors. It says, "When you invest in school counselors, you are not just investing in students' academic achievement, mental health, and college and career readiness. It's an investment in the entire school, in families, and whole communities." This school said, "And since increasing its counseling staff, the district has seen an increase in attendance and a decrease in suspensions. Counselors now have more time to visit classrooms and tend to all students, not just those undergoing crisis." And then to finish that, "The counselors identify students with specific issues, such as threatening to hurt themselves, offer short-term assistance, work with teachers and students' families, then pair students with doctors, psychologists, and therapists who can address deeper issues. That's on top of their regular duties, which includes academic advising, educating school staff and students about bullying, vaping, social media, and other issues, monitoring the overall school climate, and addressing discipline issues and handling other crises." So I think you'll see my plug for the counselors. Also added to that is the transition coach, very similar to the middle school, helping students with reentry. It would be one position shared between the two middle schools. Also, students with concussions who are out, to help them come back and transition back into school, to have one person working with all the teachers and the family to create a support system and really build that community. We talked about the point for computer science teacher, that was also important as well. And that would also help increase the position, we have a .6, it would increase it to a 1.0, computer science and personal finance. When I talk to students, they overwhelmingly mention that personal finance course, and more students would like to take it. And then the 1.0 work-study coordinator at the high school, there's a growing need for a work-study program. They've been running on a program very limited scale, but the students would end up spending their last semester, senior year, participating in internship. They also need to take math and English. And in discussion with Stephen Imbush, he and I were actually discussing this the other week, that there's a possibility this might morph into us offering a night school classes, which could be used by students both in and outside the district. So we're hearing this from students, parents, and NIASK that this could, this should be more of a priority. We also talked about the severe special needs teacher at Fisher School, it's called the DLP program. And when you, and then the full day further reduction of $135,000. That would adjust the tuition from 1,800, right, Mike, to 1,260. When you look at that total increase, that is a 2.3 million, and that would be an increase of 5%. The reason I have the third column on the right, that's a 4.8% increase, and that is my recommendation. You can disagree with me, I won't be offended, but my recommendation is a 4.8, and I want to get your thoughts on this. What the reduction would mean is the severe, with the severe special needs teacher, and speaking with John Quillie, and I think he mentioned this too at the budget hearing, we were really able to look at the programmatic structure, the needs, and be able to look at how we can shift things around. And he strongly feels, and I support him in that, is that that can wait another year. That is something that we are good for next year in that programmatic structure. And then if we reduce the full day K tuition, just to reduce that by 35,000, you keep that at 100,000, that would still adjust the tuition from 1,800 to 1,400. Then you're down to 2.2 million, and that's a 4.8 increase, and that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Goff.
Anything, did I miss anything, Mike?
I can't believe you just read all that.
You're there in the entry plan, I don't know if I'll have a voice tomorrow.
Yeah, you can play with tomorrow, but I think you covered it really well.
Well, Bridgette gets a drink of water, I'll continue to unpack this just for the benefit of the community. As some people know, we begin this process in December, we have a meeting with leadership, and then we have our budget hearing process, which we did at the beginning of this year, this month. We also, this week, some of our colleagues were here for the town administrator's budget message, and we've had a number of very productive conversations from school committee leadership and our professional staff with the townside folks. And as we look at, it's important to point out that under the current town administrator's budget, we have a 3.4.
3.3.
Sorry, 3.3 allocation. And this number, as we continue to go through the process, we'll go before this, we'll vote a budget number tonight, then go before the finance committee. This number changes as local aid numbers change, with move-ins and the like. But as we kind of unpack what the story of our budget is, I wanted to begin the debate and discussion of this committee by really unpacking that 4% number. And to highlight, number one, we look at what are the things that are driving our budget and the things that, in this first column, that we must do to, and that are part and parcel of really level service funding. The first being our collective bargaining total of 900,000. Those are the things that we are bound to from our collective bargaining agreement. And Dr. Goff mentioned this briefly, but we have committed, we have signed an agreement with a 1.5, 1.5, and 1.75 over three-year increase, which is incredibly moderate, and it is the product of years of tremendous collective effort from this board, from our professionals, from our teachers, and I think it's something to be truly proud of. But that is something that there is no moving on, and we must do. Likewise, the Medicaid reduction is something that was foisted upon us a few years ago. They moved the goal line as to who counted in that line item. And here now, we're seeing a state reduction because of a number of issues around billing. And so that is something that we have no choice in. We're working with our elected officials at the state level, but that bill will come, that bill must be paid regardless of anything else. And likewise, changes in tuition with move-ins as well, those are things that are part and parcel of our baseline. So when we look at the number we have here, should we, at the final part of this budget, should we come in under 4 in order to achieve these things that we must do, as well as the health and wellness teacher, which is part of mandated education, which we are being dinged for by NIASK and which NIASK did note, as well as ESOL teachers, which are, again, part of mandated services that we must provide. In order to get here, if we, if our final budget number is not 4%, we'll have to look at other parts of our budget, whether they be elementary class size, whether they be music, art, any type of position within our district. So it's, when we talk about what the absolute bare base is of this budget, it's a 3.94% increase, just to do the things that are all very important and all principally central to our mission, but that we just can't get out of. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gallivan, who was with us earlier this evening as well for this discussion, to kind of talk about this next chunk of things that are also incredibly central, and you kind of continue to tell the story of why we are entertaining this percentage of increase and where those needs are coming from for our community. Or I can keep going, whichever.
Either way, it's fine.
Go for it.
You made the graph, so.
Thank you. I think we're just trying to make sure that the community understands our budget. And unfortunately, even though we had a very successful contract negotiation, we have these extremely unusual special education needs that we are going to have to, we have to fund those. So what began as potentially a good budget season had the rub pulled out from under us. And it is what it is. We're doing what we can, we've written to the governor and the lieutenant governor and our state reps. But we'd be kidding ourselves if we think we're going to get some kind of resolution quickly. Even if some changes happen, they won't change the Medicaid number or the special education reduction very likely for the next school year. So that said, we also understand that there's a limited amount of tax revenue to work with within the town. We, I think collectively as a committee, feel like it's important to lay out what our needs are. And that's what is showing up in yellow on the sheet that Bridgette just gave us. I think that when you think about some of the newer needs, mental health and the changing demographics of our community are the two that jumped out at me. I think that we have done a good job with social-emotional learning, but we're hearing from the people who are in the buildings that if we could do a little bit more, it would be money well spent because then our principals could focus on educating the entire group, the teachers could focus on educating their classes with the support that they would get if we could add counselors. The number of students that don't speak English or don't, who are adjusting to becoming English language speakers has just increased significantly, and that's another need that we just can't really ignore. We would like to be able to continue to reduce kindergarten tuition, and the .4 position for a computer science teacher at the high school would, as Dr. Goff explained, really be able to allow us to offer some great new courses or offer more of the same to more students. So although the money doesn't exist in the town budget right now, we, I think we as a committee felt like it was important to lay out what the needs are. Then the reality is, we're going to have to work over the next few months to look at what we could do to adjust this request, and we have to ask the town administrator, the finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen to do the same. So I think that that's the summary in a nutshell. I personally, I would be comfortable going with Dr. Goff's recommendation about voting on a 4.8% budget increase because I think that, I think that it is, it still lays out the whole story. I think that when we hear information that one of these positions could be delayed for a year, that's, that shows that our staff is really looking carefully at what they thought was imminent does not appear to be so imminent. And I think that it would be great if we could reduce kindergarten tuition. At this point, I'm not sure we're going to get to that because of how big the gap is between available revenue and what we would like to be able to do. But I would like to keep a reduction of kindergarten tuition on our list. And I think that going from 1,800 to 1,400 is a huge step in the right direction. So personally, I would be supportive of the 4.8% increase. And I think that it, for the community members that are listening, it's a typical thing that there will be a gap between what the school committee is asking for and what the town administrator says is available when you're still in January and February. It's not unusual, it's not a time to panic, but it is a time to roll up our sleeves.
Further comments, was there anything?
I guess, and something that's impressing me right now, looking at our list addressing social-emotional needs in particular, is that I think we're trying to move into more of a preventative model than a reactive model, which I think is cost-saving both figuratively and literally in the long run. With the counselors, the, I think the principals did a great job at our meeting discussing the needs, and it's hard to put off when someone's in crisis, oh, wait till that counselor can come over here from the other school or till tomorrow. I know from my own professional work, you know, you strike a battle, the iron is hot, and that's when you make the most impact in the long run, is that connection in the moment of urgency. I'd say the same with the transition coach. Someone made the point, I think Principal Morgan work, about when someone comes back from something, they're kind of in crisis still. So that's a really important time to help a child transition back, even in the middle school, not to let them try to jump right in because that might lead them to leaving again or having to be out again. I feel the same way about the dropout prevention work-study facilitator. I think that's a really important position. I think Principal Imbush made a really good case for that position as well, talking about, you know, what really is a good fit for kids in school, and so why not work with them to help them stay in, get some work, get a degree rather than, you know, being reactive and trying to get kids in school who are, you know, have truancy or other issues. issues. If Dr. Quillian doesn't feel like we need the special needs teacher right now, then I would go with that recommendation. So I, you know, would be more inclined to go with the 4.8% increase. But again, what impresses me is that I think we're trying not to be reactive and really be preventative at this point.
Further questions? No comments? No discussion? Do I? Mrs. Gallivan?
I'll make a motion if there are no more questions.
Fair enough.
I would make a motion to request a WAPU public schools budget of 48,328,350 for the FY20 school year, sorry, FY21 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Ms. Muccini. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 6-0-0. Thank you.
Let me just add something. I think, I think that it's so important for people to realize, we are appreciative of what we do have.
Oh, yeah.
I think that, that, you know, this is not about good guys and bad guys. This is about the fact that it's our job to advocate for what, what our students need. On the other hand, we, we completely understand that we have a very, a large amount of taxpayer money, we treat it carefully, and we will continue to do that. And we'll find a way to, to balance this budget in the end. But we just felt strongly that it's important to advocate for, for needs.
And, and that's a good point, because that's how the elementary principals started their presentation, by talking about how grateful they were for the, the support and the positions that they were able to get.
But to your point, Bridget, about, you know, the budget represents things that are ethically, you know, sort of our responsibility to do for our students, and on paper, some of this might look like it affects only a very small percentage or a small group of students, and in reality, the impacts would be felt very, very widely for all of our students and staff. And, you know, I think Mrs. Gallivan echoed that as well. It's our, it's our obligation to say what our students need and to fight for it, regardless of what, you know, we end up needing to, to work, the context, the constraints we need to end up working in ultimately.
Well said. Final thoughts? Excellent. Moving on to old business, 2020-2021 school year calendar, second reading.
Yes, so it closes the draft of the calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. So it proposes that teachers will return to school on Monday, August 31st, students in grades one through 12 will return to school on Wednesday, September 2nd, pre-K and K will return to school on Tuesday, September 8th, and then the last day of school without snow, without snow, would be Thursday, June 17th. And what we had proposed was, the only change was the additional early release date was added on Friday, January 15th. Typically, you know, as we know, that that's been the, the full PD day, but because of the election, we had to move that. But we would like to have an early release day on Friday to have that as a, a staff professional development day.
Any questions or comments? I have two, actually. One, I just, I was out for a jog, I know that's hard to believe, but I ran into a neighbor who had a whole bunch of thoughts on the calendar. And one of them was, she had read our contract, of all things, and noticed that we had, for the, for this coming contract year that we're beginning, we've negotiated it before Labor Day start. And the thing she raised with me, and I think it's, it's important to keep in the back of our minds, is how, like, for families who are trying to travel on, on budgets and the like, they book flights and things very far in advance. And it was, it was great for her to know that we're going to be back before Labor Day for three years. And the other suggestion, which I would just, I, I don't know who to direct this to, why do we vote the calendar at this time of year? I know we, we always do that, and it's, but is, is, could we do it earlier? Could we do next year's calendar in September? That really gives like a whole school year of, of lead time for parents. It just, it's something that brought to my attention. I thought it was an idea we might want to consider in the fall, that, you know, looking, looking ahead, I know there's, there are some things that can be moved around, I mean, principally for start times and vacation times, it might be something to, to think about. That's all I got about that. Any further? Someone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the school year, the 2020-2021 school year calendar.
Second. Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. We now have our draft 2020-2021 school committee calendar.
That's the second reading as well.
Second reading as well. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Green?
Green, it's Green.
I got it, I'm getting there. I'm like a second off tonight. Do your great.
Motion to approve the 2020-2021 school committee meeting calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Ms. Syrick, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Excellent, we now move on to MSBA update.
We have a meeting, right, on Monday? We need to go to the MSBA for the OPM, correct? We'll be, we'll be presenting. And then they'll let us know if, if a thumbs up on the, on our OPM?
2:05.
2:05, not, not 2:00 o'clock, and not 2:15. 2:05.
School bell schedules.
So once we, once we go, then we'll be able to have a better update.
Wonderful. Legislative activity, subcommittee activity? Anyone? Mrs. Gallivan?
I just wanted to mention, we had a curriculum subcommittee meeting. And we don't need to recap the, the meeting itself right now, but I think it's really important to recognize that both Mr. Han and Dr. Goff are in up to their eyeballs with curriculum, information, and work, and it's, it's just something I think you guys deserve some credit for, because you've been working really hard at it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Excellent. And just a reminder, Tech Legislative Breakfast is February 7th, 2020, in Denham.
This week.
Eight AM?
9:30. They want to, it's at the Early Childhood Center. They don't want people arriving when their students are arriving. So they, it starts at 9:30, and they do want RSVPs. So if you intend to go, make sure you RSVP either to Tech, or tell me, and I'll RSVP for you.
Excellent. Any other business on the subcommittee? Seeing none. We go to warrants, donations, and minutes. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants, number 20, from December 26th, from number 2026 PA, and from January 9th, number 2028 PA, for the amounts listed in packets.
Second. Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
I will make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants from January 9th, 220028, from January 16th, 220029, and from January 23rd, 220030, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Would someone like to take gift and donation approval?
I will make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Boyd and School, from the Boyd and Pack for, uh, school store, $98.31. To Boyd and School, from the Boyd and Pack for Calming Corner, $1,000. To Boyd and Fisher, Elm Street and Old Post Road Schools, from Dad of Savings, for elementary school support, $1,500. To Boyd and Fisher, Old Post Road and Fisher's, I was just probably saying Elm. Boyd and Fisher, Old Post Road and Elm Street Schools, from Bay State Textiles for recycling, $180.25. To Fisher School, from the Fisher Pack, the PVAIS swim, $300. And to Johnson Middle School, from Artsonia Commission, an amount of $193.14.
Second. Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Would someone like to take the minutes?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes for January 9th, 2020.
Second. Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
I'll make a motion to approve the public budget hearing meeting minutes for January 14th, 2020.
Second. Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
A motion to approve the public budget hearing meeting minutes for January 21st, 2020.
Second. Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
And lastly, a motion to approve the curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2020.
Second. Motion by Ms. Muccini, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thanks, hon.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Donizio, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.